My green light is flashing. See? Good evening. We call to order the December 17th meeting of the Sayoville Board of Education. Please rise with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you please remain standing to observe a moment of silence for a former teacher at Sayoville War Memorial High School. I just recently found out that back in September, Mary Pellicia, who was an English teacher for 31 years, retired in 2001. She was the advisor to the drama department makeup crew and designed and constructed costumes for many years. Mary is survived by her husband Frank of 56 years. Please keep Mary and her family in your prayers. Ms. Hill, roll call.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito? Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Pabon?
Here.
Ms. Pylock?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Hill, will you summarize executive session, please?
The board discussed student matters, negotiations related to the Teamsters, and matters falling under attorney-client privilege. Personnel, including but not limited to agenda items, was on the agenda but was not discussed.
Okay. Any correspondence of note?
No.
Okay, thank you. And now we need a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Hi, Mr. Walsh and Mrs. Pabon.
Hey.
Mr. Callahan?
I'm yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Up steam.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Ms. Pylock?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
All righty. And now we turn to our Student Council representatives. Morgan?
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Morgan Kuntz, SWMHS Student Council Board of Education representative. I would like to begin with clubs and activities. A representative from the Savannah College of Art and Design gave a special workshop to students in the art department. The topic was business and entrepreneurship. The speaker also gave an overview of SCAD's many art programs and the opportunities available at the school. The guidance department took seniors to the Malcolm Bernard's College Fair at Raritan Valley Community College. The Malcolm Bernard Historically Black Colleges and Universities Fair is a nonprofit volunteer organization that partners with community and state agencies to introduce a multitude of students eager to learn about higher education opportunities, the college admissions representatives from the campuses of HBCUs. Students had the ability to speak with admission representatives from over 40 HBCUs. Schools such as Howard University, Morgan State University, Delaware State University, and Bennett College were all present. Multiple students were accepted on the spot and some even received merit scholarships based on the amazing work they've done at SWMHS. Students in the psychology and sociology classes visited the Museum of Modern Arts in New York City to explore how the brain processes visual stimuli and how society influences art and vice versa. SWMHS's 2024 valedictorian, Jay Desai, visited the high school. Jay is currently a freshman at Princeton University and spoke with juniors and seniors about everything from the application process to life on campus. He encouraged everyone to work to the best of their abilities and said that the high school advanced placement classes truly mirror his college courses. Students in Ms. Drabich's honors accounting class had a memorable and informative day at Rider University touring the campus and learning about their accounting program. Some winter student athletes went to the Greater Middlesex Conference Winter Sports Summit. They had a great time networking with other athletes in the county. Student musicians and choir performed magically during their holiday concert. Led by Dr. Caruso, the jazz ensemble and concert band played brilliantly and impressed all in attendance. In addition, the choir and advanced choir, led by Mr. Sanford, harmonically impressed the audience with several contemporary and classic holiday songs. Ms. Abigail Wekel, a local realtor, visited a few financial literacy classes. She made a presentation to students about building a financial plan, as well as building credit as a young adult. She also shared her personal experiences about being a realtor in the Sayoville area. During the Women's Society Club meeting, board members spread awareness of the increase in domestic violence cases during the holiday season. Students decorated cookies and wrote holiday letters that will be donated to those spending the holidays at the Hazlit Women's Shelter. The students who earned an A in all their classes during the first marking period were rewarded with a delicious breakfast and prizes during the Renaissance Breakfast. The Model Congress participated in New Jersey's Model Congress Party Day at the New Jersey Capitol House Annex in Trenton. Congratulations to Rohit Gumati, who was elected as a Democrat Whip. He is the first high school student in his first year as a party member to achieve a party-elected position. Students from Ms. Mojice's Advanced Placement Art History classes visited the Metropolitan Museum of Art. They were assigned an art scavenger hunt, which included taking notes and answering questions about specific artwork and having their photo taken while posing like one of the artworks. Congratulations to Ms. Zank for being selected Teacher of the Year for the 2024-2025 school year, as well as Ms. Chupka for being selected Educational Support Professional of the Year. Moving on to sports, the girls' bowling team defeated JP Stevens High School to earn their first match win of the season. Likewise, the boys' team beat Colonia High School to grab their first victory of the season. Congratulations to the boys' basketball team for winning their first game against South Amboy. Good luck to the girls' basketball team at their first game against Matouchin on Friday. Congratulations to the wrestling team for winning their first three matches of the season. The swim team kicked off their season with two wins against Monroe and Obridge, who are in a higher division than them. Congratulations to Michael Wazenko, Sebastian Velez, Joshua Jatun, and Brody Canaan for breaking the 200 medley relay record at the first meet of the season. I would also like to congratulate Michael Wazenko for breaking his own 200 IM record, along with the 100 backstroke record that was previously held by Peter Dufrat in 2011. Good luck to all winter athletes with the rest of their season. Thank you for your time and support.
Excellent job, as always. I had a chance to attend the Renaissance Breakfast. About 190 students. It was wonderful.
Morgan, are you running indoor track?
No, I'm swimming.
You're swimming? Oh, that's great.
Mm-hmm.
Your sister swims too, correct?
Yep.
Okay. You guys have two big wins.
Yeah.
Obridge and Monroe, right?
Mm-hmm.
What's your next swim?
I have three records broken already.
I know. Michael, yeah, you broke two of them. When's the next swim meet?
Tomorrow.
And who are we playing?
South Brunswick.
Swimming against South Brunswick? Oh, we're gonna swim better than them.
It's gonna be a close one, but...
That's a... Is it here at CCL or is it there?
It's at the Aquatic Center, here.
Okay. I'll try to get a... Begins at four?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Great job, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Wish your sister good luck for us, too.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much, Morgan. And now, Alana?
Good evening, Board of Education administrators... Oh, members and administrators. My name is Alana Sargne, Sayoville Middle School Student Council Board of Education representative. Here's what is going on at the Sayoville Middle School. The student council held their annual Fall Anything Goes Assembly the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break. The staff defeated the sixth and seventh graders. However, for the first time in school history, the eighth-grade students defeated the staff. The food drive came to... Came close, and we collected 1,330 food items. The students who donated will be taping our own Mr. Number to the main foyer hallway on Friday, December 20th. The video will be posted to the school website for all to view. Thank you to all those who participated. This week, the student council is hosting the Last Spirit Week of 2024. The community service CASA gift drop-off happened on Friday, December 13th. They collected over 240 gifts for children in foster care in Middlesex County. The replenished food drive pickup is December 19th. Career Club will hold a meeting tomorrow, December 18th, for grades seventh and eighth grade only. The PTO hosted SMS Got Talent on Friday, December 6th, at 7:00 PM at Sayoville War Memorial High School. They would like to thank the judges and all the talented acts. Save the date, Sayoville Middle School Tricky Try and Handbag Bingo, Friday, January 31st. Tickets will be on sale next month. The Odyssey of the Month currently has three teams preparing for the regional round of the competition in February. Now on to Sayoville Middle School athletics. The middle school boys' soccer blue and gray team celebrated the conclusion of their season, along with the freshman, junior varsity, and varsity teams. At their end-of-season banquet, the Sayoville War Memorial High School on November 25th. A special thanks to all the administration and board members who attended and everyone that helped put together such a memorable evening. The girls' blue basketball team is off to a great start. They defeated North Brunswick Middle School last week in their first game by nine points to bring their season record to 1-0, 1-0. The gray team played South Amboy very tough and will look to defeat Denalyn today. The girls' program is looking forward to an exciting season ahead. The middle school cheerleading team will be hosting the Winter Pep Rally on Monday, December 23rd. They cheered on the boys' basketball team last Friday versus North Brunswick. They will be cheering on Wednesday as the Lady Bombers take on East Brunswick. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the students at Sayoville Middle School.
Great job, Alana. Mrs. Bloom, I have a couple of questions for Alana. Alana, I'm getting really old. I'm almost 60 and my hearing's going. Did I hear correctly that you're going to be taping Mr. Nurnberger?
Yes.
No, not videotaping. You're gonna be actually literally taping him.
Yeah.
How do I get involved in this?
Well...
I just wanna put one piece of tape.
I could give you my piece, because...
Oh, that is so sweet of you.
My homeroom brought in, I think, 200 cans.
Wow.
So, everybody in our class is getting the opportunity for a piece of tape.
That is so cool. What a creative fundraiser. And I gotta hand it to Mr. Nurnberger. What a guy.
Yeah.
For doing that. I think that's great that he's doing that. Did you participate in Family Vacation Day, dress up, the other day?
I don't know.
Or was it just the staff?
I think that was just the staff.
Were they really wearing some crazy outfits?
Not that I know of.
Mrs. Bloom, you would've appreciated. Mr. Nurnberger was dressed up as Cousin Eddie from Family Vacation.
Okay.
And he had those white loafer shoes on. You would've definitely appreciated. Did you notice him in the white loafer shoes yesterday?
I don't think so.
No, you...
He didn't impress her at all.
If you would've saw him, it would've stood out, honey.
Yeah, maybe if I saw him. I don't think I saw him yet.
Great job, honey. Both of you, great presentations, as always.
Thank you, Alana.
Oh, Morgan, you have one more?
Last week was Spirit Week for the teachers, and Friday was everything but a water bottle. And my swim coach had a fishbowl with a straw in it.
Oh!
My gosh. And we had no idea about this. I was like, is this Spirit Week or something? Because why are the teachers...
It was Staff Spirit Week. We're allowed to have staff spirit.
And I had no idea. And I was like, why does she have a fishbowl with a straw in it? I was so confused.
My compliments to the administration and the staff at the middle school and high school for bringing some levity to both buildings and allowing the kids to see a different side of them. I think that's wonderful for building morale throughout the building. So, kudos to our students and our staff at the middle school and high school for that. Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And ladies, have a very happy holidays and wish your families the same for us.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom, for the gift.
You're welcome.
In a relaxing winter recess? Not too much training, Morgan.
Oh, no, no.
Enjoy, ladies. Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Good night. Happy holidays. Moving on to the president's comments. I really just wanted to mention that last week, we had our Middlesex County School Board Association meeting, and Ms. Hill and Dr. Labby came and did a budget presentation for the county, and they left everybody in awe. Because as I have been saying for years, no one, no one in the whole state of New Jersey, let alone Middlesex County, gets the information on budget that we get. People were just floored. They tell you all this? Yes, they're supposed to tell you all this. So, Erin and Dr. Labby were excellent, and there was another gentleman there helping you out.
Brian Skowsky, yeah. Erin did all the work, guys. I said nothing.
Yes, it was excellent. So, thank you for that. The next meeting will be in February, and it will be virtual. So, anyone who's interested, once you get that email, you can sign up for the virtual meeting. Okay. Ms. Napolitano, highlights?
Commendations to Mr. Klukuski, Sayoville War Memorial High School principal, and his team of administrators and faculty for earning Middle States Association of Colleges and School Commission of Elementary and Secondary Schools accreditation for Sayoville War Memorial High School until the year 2032. Congratulations to Mr. Naster, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Vanderbeck, Supervisor of Special Education, Ms. Fizini and Ms. Garnett, teachers, Ms. Falcone and Ms. Batko, paraprofessionals, and the past and present crew from the Bombers Beyond Cafe for being selected as a 2024 Community Choice Best Coffee Shop in New Jersey. Wow! I know.
Number one. Number one.
I voted. I remember voting for that. Okay. Congratulations to the 24-25 Governors Educators of the Year, Governors Education Services Specialist for the Year, and Sayoville Education Association Education Support Professionals of the Year, whatever, SEA ESP recipients. All those names, okay. Congratulations to our Bombers Unified Sports student athletes who participated in this year's Unified Indoor Soccer Tournament at the high school, middle school, upper elementary school, Arlis School, and the Project Before a Cheesecake in Slover Schools for their amazing display of teamwork and sportsmanship. Thank you to Mrs. Karkeek and all the advisors, coaches, and staff members who once again made each game this year so special for all our student athletes and everyone who attended. Congratulations to Amanda Moken, Sayoville War Memorial High School's varsity football coach, on being named the GMC Blue Division Coach of the Year.
Volleyball?
I'm sorry, volleyball. I'm not feeling... Volleyball. Congratulations to Mary Charmelo, Sayoville War Memorial High School Field Hockey Coach, for being named the GMC White Division Coach of the Year. Congratulations to the Sayoville Junior Bombers Division 12 Football Team for winning the American Youth Football National Championship. And congratulations to the Sayoville Junior Bombers DA Cheer Team for winning the American Youth Cheer National Championships. That's it.
And we'll go ahead, and as we do every year, we'll celebrate all of those Governors Educators of the Year and the ESP, the SEA ESPs during our June Board of Education... Actually, our May, our second meeting in May. So, we'll celebrate each one for that. Well, Mrs. Bloom, we do have some presentations that are not on the agenda that we need to make. Unfortunately, we have to say goodbye to some very special people on the board, and we have commemorative plaques for them. But before we give those plaques, if you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words about them. So, first of all, Mr. Walsh, we can't thank you enough for coming to us in need, your first stint on impact on the growth of our athletics programs. I can remember countless budget meetings where you questioned and sought answers to a lot of budgetary items involved in athletics, and you helped Ms. Badami and the school district mold some of those great programs that we have and that we started. So, we can't thank you enough for all that you did for the district, and we'd like to give you this as a token of our appreciation. And if you didn't notice, if we could pan in on him, he's wearing his tuxedo shirt. Ms. Pylock, again, you came to us when we were in need. We had a very difficult year that year. I won't go into details, but we really needed someone to come in and fill a pretty big void that we had, and you far exceeded anyone's expectations. You bring a calm, professional, very intellectual-based presence to everything that you do, and you've been instrumental in shaping our curriculum and instruction for the time period then, as well as, and most importantly, the time period you've been with us now. And, you know, we talked about it at our last student achievement meeting. We wouldn't be where we are right now in terms of dual enrollment, and particularly dual enrollment towards an associate's degree, which can now lead to entrance into Rutgers University and potentially a Rutgers University degree without the work that you did. You are a true leader and an inspiration to all of us, particularly me, and I valued the time that I had to share with you in terms of leading this district, and you're going to be sorely missed. So, I don't have a plaque for the next person, because that's the kind of person he is. Mr. Esposito is one of the most modest people that you would ever meet, and he wanted to use the money that we would spend on a plaque to put into a student scholarship, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do that. But again, it goes to Mr. Esposito and his moral and ethics that, you know, we don't have a plaque, because he was thinking of the students. And Mr. Esposito, throughout his tenure here, has always been thinking about the students. Everything he did was with the students at the forefront of his thinking, and that's what we all should be doing. All of us work for one entity, and it's the students of this district. And one of the many great things that he's done since he's been a board member here is shaping our school safety and security program. When he started as a board member, he immediately dug into school safety and security. He made sure that we had meetings on a timely basis. He wanted to make sure that we had our secure vestibules. He did research on his own. He went to conferences and workshops on his own, and in fact, I think I recall there was a special one that I didn't even know you were going to, that we both met up there. Was prominent with him, and I know for sure that we probably have one of the safest districts, and I'd have to argue the safest district in this state, especially in a time period in which just yesterday, there was a school shooting. And we are what I consider to be, if not the safest, one of the safest. And, Mr. Esposito, we would never be here without you and the work that you did. Beyond that, you've actually been the longest-serving president that I've ever had the privilege to work with as a superintendent. This is my 11th year as a superintendent in Sayoville, my 14th year total being a superintendent, and I think you and I shared leadership for the longest period in my career. And I can't thank you enough for the opportunities that I had to work with you closely as a superintendent and Board of Education president. I learned a great deal from you, and I valued our working relationship throughout that time period. And I thank you for everything that you've done in the capacity of a board member, as well as in the capacity as a Board of Education president for this school district.
My turn.
There you go, Mrs. Bloom.
Dr. Labby brings speeches, I bring gifts. So, I want to thank each one of you for serving. It has been my pleasure. We don't always have to agree, but we always agreed that we were working for the children. And I think we are all better for having known each other. Patrick, I know I will see you around. I'm sure Anthony and Danielle, I will see you around. But it has been a pleasure, and I wish you all the best and a very happy holiday.
If I can, I'd like to just say a couple of words.
Ted?
I'd like to take a moment to recognize and express my deepest gratitude to all three of our departing board members, Pat, Danielle, and Anthony. Pat, I'm really gonna miss you, buddy. You were always there when in a dull moment, you were always there to bring much-needed levity. Your humor, positivity, and passion for our students always shined through. Even though you're stepping away from the board, your commitment to our kids remains unwavering. As a coach, community leader, you continue to be an integral part of our district, making a difference for our student body and helping shape their futures. Danielle, over the past three years, I've come to know you and deeply respect you, not only for your intellect and insight, but for your calm demeanor and thoughtful approach. Your presence will be greatly missed on this board. I have no doubt you will find joy in many of the pursuits ahead of you, whether it's spending more time with your family or cheering for your kids on the sidelines. You left a meaningful and lasting mark here, and for that, we are all truly grateful. Anthony, when I first joined the board, you were a guiding force for me and for so many others. Not only were you an excellent board member and president, but you also took the time to mentor me and show me the ropes. You were always the most prepared person in the room, bringing thoughtful and insightful questions to every meeting. You challenged all of us to be better, better board members, better advocates, and better leaders. Your commitment to our students is unquestionable. On a personal note, I want to thank you for everything you've done, not just for this board and our schools, but for me personally and for so many of us that have had the privilege of serving with you. Pat, Danielle, Anthony, thank you for your dedication, your hard work, and your lasting impact you've made. While your time on the board is ending, your influence and legacy will continue to benefit our students, community, for years to come. I wish each of you all the best as you embark on your next chapters in your lives. Thank you.
I also want to make a comment. To all three of you, it's been a pleasure working with you guys. I have not always agreed with all of you, even individually or as a group, but I do agree that you really did a lot for the students of Sayoville, and, you know, you will be missed, and, you know, you should be proud of what you've done and of your achievement, even though sometimes on... And publicly, we get bashed. It's not easy being a Board of Education member. You are constantly critiqued for anything you say or don't say. And you also... It's easy for the citizens of Sayoville to sit behind their computers, but it takes a lot of caring to come to these meetings, to be on these committees, to show up for, you know, events throughout the town. So, thank you so much, and I hope that you all have a great life, and I hope to see you in a public service different role in the future. So, consider that. Sayoville needs good people on the Borough Council. You always got that, people. I'll nominate you. You got my vote?
I'd like to say, in honor of the distinguished Pat Walsh, I say we earned this meeting early tonight. You know? Be very brief in your comments.
Well, the more you talk, Mr. Fernandez, the less weird chance of that happening.
We discussed updates on the referendum projects. It's winter, so certain things aren't happening that quickly, but we're still pretty much on track for all the timelines that were previously discussed. We also had our auditors present at the meeting to go over the June 30th, 2024 audit, and everything was good there. We're putting additional funds into capital and maintenance and emergency reserve for future needs for the district. That's about it.
Anyway, I just want to say that Erin, you are the best business administrator that any Board of Education could hope to have on their board. You really do, and I always tell people, you squeeze a penny and the dollar comes out. You really do a great job managing this... I don't want to... I don't care what the people... Anybody says, and they says, "Oh, the budget, the budget." You manage that budget like it's your own, okay? And you do a great job. And the auditors... That's not just my opinion, that is a financial, legal auditing opinion as well. So, congratulations, you really do a great job.
We will mostly be looking for substitutes and other non-certificated staff members. We also reviewed the fill rates since our last meeting. That's it, Mrs. Bloom.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan, are you going to do student achievement for us?
I will, and in honor of Pat Walsh, I've got probably my longest one, so.
Oh, good.
The Student Achievement Committee met last night. We discussed there's six curriculum guide revisions that are on tonight's agenda. Three of them are elementary language arts guides, and three of them are high school honors, honors-level English courses. We also discussed a new organization at the high school, the SWMHS Historical Society, which is on tonight's agenda as well. Mrs. Grossman reviewed the new courses at the high school for next year that we're seeking approval for, also on tonight's agenda. That would be digital arts two, biological life sciences, some video production and broadcasting courses to replace the, and update the current TV, Roman numeral one, Roman numeral two, and Roman numeral three courses, and a new filmmaking course. Again, they're all on the agenda for tonight. Mrs. Grossman also spoke about the new science course sequence that we're going to have at the high school. It now means that biology will be brought down to grade nine, chemistry to grade 10, physics to grade nine. She and her staff decided on that resequencing based on the data that she collected from the NJSLA Science and the enrollment numbers. And then she also gave us the update that Dr. Labby alluded to earlier with Middlesex College, that we're going to have an early college experience where students will be able to earn up to 45 college credits in dual enrollment, with 15 credits at Middlesex College, and the potential to earn their associate's degree, and then the potential to go to Rutgers, and so on and so forth, all while graduating with a high school diploma. So fabulous job, fabulous job there. Mr. Naster, he gave an update to the committee on the search for a new interventional math program to be used with special ed students, and Center Reach, Central Reach, a new resource for special ed students that supports multiple disabilities in classrooms related to applied behavioral analysis. And lastly, Mrs. Burt gave us all an update on the recent staff development offerings, including the new teacher workshops, CPR training, RTI through Linkit. And then she spoke about the new grants, or, I'm sorry, the grants that we always have, the climate change grant in grade seven at the middle school, the climate change continuation application for grade five, the Connect Safely Grant, and the work related on all the other grants she does for the federal ESA. Our next meeting will be late January. Pat Walsh will not be here.
Outstanding presentation, very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Okay, I've already spoken to the Middlesex County. Pat Walsh.
Outstanding presentation, very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Okay, I've already spoken to the Middlesex County. I'm going to go to the other one. I understand this portion of the legislative questions, or your presentation. I have a question. The minutes from the government. I think it's been approved. I'm going to go to the other one. I understand this portion of the legislative questions, or your presentation. I have a question. The minutes from the government. I think it's been approved. I'm going to go to the other one. I understand this portion of the legislative questions, or your presentation. I have a question. The minutes from the government. I think it's been approved. I'm going to go to the other one. I understand this portion of the legislative questions, or your presentation. I have a question. The minutes from the government. I think it's been approved. I'm going to go to the other one. I understand this portion of the legislative questions, or your presentation. I have a question. The minutes from the government. I think it's been approved. I'm going to go to the other one. I understand this portion of the legislative questions, or your presentation. I have a question. The minutes from the government. I think it's been approved. I'm going to go to the other one. I understand this portion of the legislative questions, or your presentation. I have a question. The minutes from the government. I think it's been approved. I'm going to go to the other one. I understand this portion of the legislative questions, or your presentation. I have a question.
Okay, so let's run through this pretty quickly. Let's begin with finance and infrastructure. Page three, we're asking you to accept generous donations that were made to us. First, 600 pumpkins valued at about $1,200 from Habiac Farms, and that went to both the project before at Cheesecake School and the project before at Solover School. And if you saw pictures in Talk Soup, the kids had a wonderful time with the pumpkins, so we can't thank Habiac Farms enough. Also, we thank the Carmen Spezi as well as Mazlooski Funeral Homes for donating up to $500 to our Bombers Beyond program. Those are items number 16 through 18. Number 19, which you can find on page four, Ms. Burt has been hard at work with Mr. Glock-Malloy on writing a grant that we're asking you to approve submission of. It's the 2025 Connect Safely Grant, and it's in the amount of $1,000. Number 21 and 22, which you can find on page 12, which you can find on page five, I'm sorry about that, we're asking you to approve the purchase of technology. Most of that technology in number 21 is the replacement of our Chromebooks and our staff laptops, but 22 is for the aforementioned by Mr. Callahan, the TV studio labs. Not only are we going ahead and renaming some of those classes, but we're obviously buying new equipment for those classes. It's going toward that, and our esports lab that will be constructed in the spring, that's the equipment that's going to be in that. So that's number 22. Number 28, which you can find on page six, we're asking you to approve a contract with Imagine Learning to provide tutoring services to identified students in grades four through five in the amount of $17,472, and that's part of the annexation of the 2025, well, it was 2024, now it's a 2025 New Jersey High Impact Tutoring Grant. And Ms. Grossman and Ms. Burt worked very hard, along with Ms. Burns, to go ahead and produce that, so we thank them very much for that. Number 40, which you can find in the addendum, we're asking you to approve the purchase of some custodial machines and equipment in the amount of $61,360. Any questions on those items or any of the other items on finance and infrastructure? Okay, hearing and seeing none. If I can bring your attention now to student achievement, beginning with number one. As referenced by Mr. Callahan earlier, we're asking you to approve several or multiple revised curriculum guides. If you're viewing online, you can see all those curriculum guides posted on our meeting website. The motion for that is on page 14. Also on page 14, you can find the new multiple courses referenced by Mr. Callahan earlier for the 2025-2026 school year at the high school, and that is motion number two. Motion's number three and eight, which you can find on page 15 in the addendum, we're asking you to approve the long-term suspension for several students. Number four, which you can find on page 15, we're asking you to approve, as Mr. Callahan referenced earlier, a new club at the high school, and it's to mirror the Borough Organization, the Historical Society, well, we're going to have our own high school historical society. And we can't thank enough Mrs. Ferrari from the high school for volunteering to be the advisor for that. Any questions on those items or anything else on student achievement? Okay, moving ahead to governance. Number one, which you can find on page 17, we're asking you to approve for a first reading, BOE Regulation 5517, Student Identification Cards, Lanyard Procedures. That is a revision to that, and that is first reading. We'll ask you to approve a second reading at our next Board of Education meeting. And number three, which you can find in the addendum, this is for actually CUSAC. And if you don't remember, CUSAC is the Qualitative Single Accountability Continuum that is used by the Department of Education to evaluate the school district to make sure that we're providing a thorough and efficient education. They are coming out with a new way of scoring items one through seven in instruction and programs. They are giving districts, they're not officially coming out with that until next year, but they're giving districts an opportunity that are being evaluated this year to go ahead and implement it. And Ms. Grossman and I talked about it, and Ms. Grossman thoroughly researched it and felt that it was an avenue that we should take to ensure that we get the highest score possible on our total CUSAC score, particularly in instruction and programming. So we're asking you to approve an equivalency waiver that we can go ahead and submit tomorrow to the County Board of Education. Any questions on those items for governance? All right, finally, in personnel. Number seven and eight, as well as page, number 38 and 39, which you can find on pages 21 and 22 in the addendum, we're asking you, as we always do, to hire new certificated and non-certificated staff for this school year. Numbers nine through 11, as well as 40, which you can find on pages 22 and 23 in the addendum, we're asking you to also approve the transfer of certificated and non-certificated staff for this school year. Number 15 and 16, which you can find on page 25, we're asking you to approve paid coaches with their stipends, as well as some volunteer coaches for this school year. Numbers 21 through 23, which you can find on pages 27 and 28, we're asking you to approve faculty teaching the Sayoville Middle School Science, Multilingual Learner, and Rising Stars Academies. And number 15, which you can find on page 25, we're asking you to approve staff members to, oh, not number 15. Oh, it is number 50. No, it's not. We're asking you to approve staff members to serve as advisors on the Sayoville Middle School Environmentalist Club, and the positions are funded through the Climate Change Grant. Is that an extension from last week? Scratch that, I believe that is. Yeah. No. That's a mistake. That was leftover in my highlights from last week. That concludes my report, Mrs. Bloom. I apologize for that.
In a motion to approve the superintendent's report?
Okay, so I got Mr. Callahan and Mr. Walsh. Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Ms. Pylock?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Is this where I abstain? Okay, yes, but I need to abstain on check number 164591.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now, moving to the end of the line. Okay, at this time, we will open up for public on anything that you might like to bring to our attention. He's coming back.
Sorry, can you, just for the record, can you say your name and your address again? It's a separate, yeah.
I appreciate it. I'm a commissioner for the Sayoville Youth Relations Commission. For those who may not know what that is, I'm a very good commissioner. 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 I'm a very good commissioner.
Happy holidays to you as well. When you say departing members, I'm sorry, but it makes me think that you're dying. You're not. You're getting a new life. So shall we say those who have termed out, okay? Yeah. Yeah, departing just doesn't do it for me. I believe, does anybody else have anything?
I do. I have something I want to say. I want to give.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to close public.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Public is closed.
I would like to give our outgoing, that's what I'm going to call them, not departed, our outgoing BOE members, as well as our remaining BOE members, the opportunity to appease the public and allow for the five minutes of public discussion, you know, for the holidays in goodwill. I believe the Borough Council has also made that move. So, you know, it is a big bone of contention, the time limit. So I would like to extend that to five minutes if you guys agree. And I would like to caveat, though, if somebody does get up there and they start talking in a disparaging manner, you know, racist, things like that, that we still would be
that we still would be able to shut it down because that's not fair to, you know, the rest of the public. So I'd like to put that to a vote, a motion.
I can ask to table it till we can have a board discussion, unless you folks want to go forward tonight.
I think tabling is very wise, so we can-
I thought we already talked about this.
Yeah, it wasn't part of that discussion.
Yeah, I will say that we table it until we can discuss it in close at the next meeting.
Really? It's that hard that we have to discuss?
Well, I think there's some information that-
It's two minutes extra.
Okay. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So then we will table till the next meeting, Ms. Pabon. Okay. Anything else, any other comments? Okay. Our next meeting is January 2nd.
You know, I hate to make any meeting any longer, so I'll try to keep this very short. This board here has impressed me for the last four years and everyone who's come on. Dr. Labby, you were my friend before all this. You were my coach. And you amaze me with, I've been in schools, I've been a teacher, I've met many superintendents, but you impress me. And people of Sayoville don't realize sometimes that, you know, this meeting is sometimes the pit of where people just come and tell you how bad of a job you're doing, but there's thousands of parents and teachers out there who know what an amazing job you do and the staff you surround yourself with. Erin, I couldn't have been a board member for five minutes without you and telling me everything I need to do. Unbelievable, unbelievable. The actual board members, myself, Eileen stole a little bit of my thunder. Guys, you don't see it all. People in the public, we go in the back room. Me and Eileen put our boxing gloves on sometimes, but there's one thing I'd say about every person in this room. What I learned was that everyone loves the students. We might not agree the best way to on what to do, but every person that's up here does what they can and thinks they're doing the best for the students in this town. And it was great being with you guys for four years, and I greatly appreciate it. And good luck to the replacements.
Keanu Reeves?
Yes, Keanu Reeves.
Everybody has a title.
God bless the board.
Mr. Esposito, would you like to say anything? Oh, no, that's okay.
Listen, thank you. You guys are, you know, it's been a great nine years. Anytime the public gives you an opportunity to serve and to give back a little bit, it's amazing. So thank you, everyone, for, you know, nobody does it alone. And Dr. Labby, thank you. Erin, terrific job. David, phenomenal. And you guys, tremendous. I mean it sincerely. Great group. You know, you hear a lot about other districts, and you talk to other people, all the board members. It's not like this. It really isn't, you know? I mean, yeah, we do spar sometimes, but like Pat said, we have the main objective is the student. And that's really what it's all about. So thank you, everyone, for the opportunity. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you, Anthony. Ms. Pylock, would you like to say a fond farewell to us?
Yes, I will end it. I want to echo a lot of the sentiments that Pat and Anthony already expressed. But, you know, to the fellow board members, thank you for your support, camaraderie, teamwork. You know, definitely, you know, I've learned from all of you. Being a board member is sometimes a thankless job in many senses. So, you know, congratulations, yes, sometimes. You know, but you all put in the thought, the effort, the time, the energy. We spend a lot of time away from our family. So, you know, kudos to you, to Dr. Labby and team. You know, you guys put in countless hours beyond, you know, what anybody could expect. You know, I always say to anybody who hears I'm on the board that, you know, being an administrator is, you know, even more thankless than probably being on the Board of Ed. And you could not pay me enough to do your job because that's how hard, you know, of a task that you all have. But, you know, the growth and development that I've seen in the short, you know, three or four years that I've been on the board has been tremendous. There's still work to do because there's always work to do, right? We're always, you know, endeavoring to be greater. But I know that this district is in a very good position to take it to the next level because of all of you. So kudos. I might not be on the board, but, you know, Sayoville's in my heart, have lived here since third grade. So once a bomber, always a bomber. You guys have my phone number, so anything I can do to support, you know how to find me.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? And with that, I will make a motion to-
So moved.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Happy holidays, everyone.